Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Mayor Reese?
Mayor.
Councilmember us?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
O'Brien? Butterfield? Osmeus?
Here.
Bakerly? You have seven present. Oh, six present, three absent.
And which? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Under God.
In the fifth of liberty and justice. Any additions or conclusions to the agenda? During the we. Regular business. Thirty-four. I think you can check it out.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and really counsel. And people watching at home, if the numbers don't come through, we have better copy to hand out here. I think they'll be able to read the numbers on the charts a little bit, but. Just kind of go back to the budget calendar. At our last meeting in September, we did certify a proposed tax levy to the county. So now we are in the window where we can review and compile final recommendations. And then we will have to certify a final levy to the county by the end of the year. We're scheduled to have our truth in taxation hearing on December 4th during the regular city council. And this is just to remind the council as well as members of the public, the historical adopted budgets. So the the green line on top represents the total expenditures that have been budgeted. And the blue line at the bottom is the budgeted revenues. So you'll see that the green line or the expenses are outpacing the revenues. To make that difference up, it's been using fund balance or spending reserves. So along the way, we've been drawing down the the fund balance to make up that difference. So. This next slide. We're kind of just to kind of. Bring it back at high level of how we arrived at tax. We're going to take all of our revenues that we are receiving into the general fund. All of our expenses that we expect to spend out of the general fund, the difference would be the tax levy. So we're planning on doing a balanced budget and only levying what we need to to offset those expenses from our revenues. So what does that look like? For this year? The revenues in our general fund, this includes the local government aid. This includes all of the other, I mean, everything from building permits to fines and forfeits, everything in the general fund. We are budgeting $14,73,211. That number is slightly lower than it was at the preliminary budget meeting. Internally, we were able to find a couple areas to eliminate some expenses, or excuse me. The expenses have changed just a little bit. We were able to modify a couple hundred thousand dollars. So our our proposed tax levy out of the general fund did fluctuate a little bit down. So this.
Okay, I know you've got even updated this. You didn't update this.
We have, we have different figures.
They've got the same nine.
Oh, shoot. That is correct. What you're looking at is correct.
Yeah.
Yes, I apologize.
That slide with the 91,000, that's for 91,000, that's the old one?
Yes.
That was the one you saw at the preliminary budget. Now we have trimmed that down to 8 million, 8.9 million.
Yeah, so that's, I apologize about that. So this, this next one is going to be an overview of all the operating. I'm using the operating departments. That's going to be all of our staff departments from the administrator all the way down to all the department within city hall, public works. It's going to be everything except wastewater treatment because that's its own enterprise one. So it's going to be every other department throughout the cities, including like elections, rack, airport auditorium, everything else. You'll see the increase in the expenses is a 9.15%. And then the next, the transfers. The for our capital improvements and our civic center, which is our debt service for the refrigeration system out here is a transfer. So I just wanted to set that away to show you the true operating change is about 9.15% higher, 24 over 23. So a total out of the general fund is 1.66% higher or $352,222. Just trying to pull out a little bit in the in the other supplemental piece that I gave you to show you by department breakdown as well, the revenues and expenses. This. Is an updated number. When we, when I was at council and the mayor proposed a budget in September, we were at just under four, four mill rate increase. And this is showing after those couple staff changes, we're down to about 2.621%. So we were able to trim it a little bit down. Reflecting those couple cuts or changes. This, this is our debt service. So these are, these are payments that we have to make. The refrigeration bond, the civic center, that's what I just referenced. That's going to be solely paid for by taxes. And then the next to the improvement bonds, those are going to be the street bonds that we issued at 22 and 23. And then we're also continuing on with the city hall. It's a future debt, but it's, we're still levying for it each year. So this is, that rate has remained the same, but the amount we're levying is increasing. That's just based off our tax growth or the tax capacity increase throughout the city. Yes.
The city hall levy is going up though?
Correct. Yes, the levy amount is remaining the same. The taxes, that tax rate are increasing as our tax base increases.
Yes. So the dollars we receive increases only because of property values increasing. The tax rate is not increasing. On one side of the page, it says city hall debt 524,000. On the other side, it says 5,000.
Yes, how do we go back? Can you get back?
524 is for 2023. And for 2024, it goes up because the property values increase. So property values increase and we keep the rate at 3%, 3 mills. We're going to naturally get more debt. We're naturally going to get more money.
So.
So it's just because property values are increasing. We're not increasing the rate.
So in 2022 was the first year of the city hall debt levy. And that was 400, just under $475,000 at a three mill rate. It increased because of the, just because the real estate has gone up. And and physically growth, new, new build, new construction throughout the city. So this community investment fund bond payments, this, this graph is the same graph that was shown at city council in September. So this shows our requirements to pay. These are bond payments that we owe. And currently that is structured to be paid out of the community investment fund. That was also another attachment to the council package for tonight. It it just shows all the future payments. As we go along, in 2031 will be the last payment that'll be due, that'll pay off the 2021 street bond. So it's just showing as the bonds paid off, our our payments also decrease. So this, this is the community investment fund. Also just showing the decrease as we make those bond payments for the street improvement projects. And then what was also. What we have proposed to do with our CIP to balance the budget, to make the tax burden and tax impact less for the city is to use the community investment fund to supplement the capital improvement program. This is showing what the community investment fund would look like if we use the that to supplement the capital improvement program. And this shows that we would still have a fund balance after all the bonds are paid off. And we were able to supplement the capital improvement program in the next four years. And council can change this any future number. This is just a what if that staff put together. So that, that's the end of the slideshow portion of it. In the year, I handed out as well, the, it's just going to show each department. The adopted 23 budget, the current 2024 budget and the percent changes. And then also the other shorter one would be the revenues. And the one thing to note on the revenues, that does include the increase for the local government aid are all the aids that we are expecting to get in 2024. So the revenues also did increase as well. So I guess what staff is looking for today would be direction from the council or thoughts or concerns or anywhere you'd like us to look at. Change in the budget or recommendations, what you'd like to see or any clarification at all.
So the, the 200,000 that you were able to review was part of debt.
Yeah, great question. So what, in the original budget for the planning and development department, there was two positions being proposed to be added in there. And one was a GIS staff. And then the other one would be a utility billing clerk for the purpose of being broadband billing. So what, what we did was we removed the GIS position entirely. And then we took the utility billing clerk and put him at 50%. Because we know January 1, we won't have a broadband need for that position. So that was the significant portion. And then the other, we did have some dollars in there in case our insurance premiums came back at a very unsafe amount. We, we did get word back and that is not necessary anymore. So we were able to, the budget, that was a hundred thousand dollars. So two less than that, we were able to change a couple hundred thousand dollars in less.
The utility position, is that something that we're going to be able to build that to the, so that we don't end up with cost on that?
The idea would be for that, it would be a city position and it would be on. I guess it would, it would be its own.
It'd be an enterprise, just like sewer department.
I mean, so the idea would be to collect, collect revenues to pay the bond back over time. But after that bond is paid off or the, for the broadband project, it would pay for itself and more. But we would budget in the general fund for that position.
But we won't have the revenue next year to cover that concession.
Correct. Not from, not from. Our goal in a perfect world would be start collecting revenue next fall. But that revenue would be to pay the bond interest, the principal and interest on the bonds for the first person.
Well, it depends on how many we have online.
Correct.
It really depends on how many customers we get online. Because the number of customers we get online could outpace the bond dollars, so. But we are going to be responsible to billing? Yes.
That's what we are proposing.
Yes, we want to be responsible.
The way, the way that's structured, maybe we're, maybe that's its own work session or it will be its own work session. But we want to control every aspect of that, of that operation. Collecting and sending. Dollars.
I know that the GIS one has been a source of issues kind of thing, but can't we contract with the county for that? The due to. Yes, it, it's not the matter of doing the GIS because the county does GIS, but it's a matter of all the other work that a GIS person can do for the planning department. And the other kind of work a GIS person can do for public works, can do for any of our other. So I understand that. I remember when we had that concept of that, but the county does that also, they don't? They do their own.
So for GIS, we contract the county for the imaging parcel numbers, plats, that tax information. That's what we pay for. So when we, that's probably the general term of GIS what it's used for. That is just scratching the surface of what the power is for GIS. This would be putting all of our own information, whether it's locates. And we already do some of this for utilities, storm drains, but our broadband information will go in there. All, everything that we would produce as a city would go into a GIS, GIS program. It's a very, very powerful tool. It's just underutilized, but we don't have the capability of doing that presently. That was something that was talked about at a staff level.
GIS person can also, I mean, if we want letters for a certain area, they can capture all that information and just give us who that is, give us the format so that we can just automatically send out letters to these people without having to, to go through the process of, okay, adding them to a spreadsheet, things like that. They can create all this information without just by creating a circle on a map and it'll pick up everybody and create a spreadsheet for us. But that's something that you guys felt we needed to wait for another year, just from a budgeting standpoint?
That and transition, I would say are the two biggest factors there. Contracting all of that, any of those services to the county.
Just the, just the.
Just for what you see online. That's what we pay for our portion.
Yeah. So as far as mapping and things like that, electrical lines, sewer lines, things like that, that's all done basically now. Just to make of what they have, we need somebody on the inside to bring that information into the GIS system. So that our maps are up to date. Another question, and you use the word balanced budget. And I know every year we work balanced budget, we've been supplementing it with cash. But now we're talking about supplementing it with this from the community investment. But it's really, in my mind, it's no different than we took it from this count last year and now we're taking it from this count. So we're still borrowing from one to do another in order to balance the budget. With that, but you know, long term, if I look at this, we can only do that for, for, for four years. And actually, next year provides me and then the amounts that are available. We're really we're not solving our budget problem. We're delaying some things by using this.
Not taking savings.
Correct.
Taking savings.
Well, this is, this is a savings account.
Yeah, but we're not thinking about savings.
It's, okay, it's, it's two accounts. We took it out of savings and now we're taking it out of, out of the state of the month. So it's still a bank account. It's still money that's sitting there. So whether you call it savings or a banking account, we're still taking money that was designated for something or we're spending it. So in my mind, it's semantics, whether you're calling it a savings account or a, an investment fund, because we're reducing it with that. And we won't be able to do that in the future.
Correct. And that is a fair statement. So our thought, our logic was to just try and have it as soft of a landing as possible. In the budget process, we, we noted some departments that in the past had been maybe under budgeted for, so we tried to get a more accurate representation of overtimes that have been consistently maybe more than budgeted, some insurances that have been more than budgeted. So we got more of an accurate representation at our level. And our goal would be to wean ourselves off of that, to having it be 100% general fund would be the capital improvement plan. But this was a just to help try and soften the burden to the taxpayer, to try and just transition, get a balanced budget first and then, and then work on getting our internal budgeting more accurate now. So we can work to getting off that community investment fund transfer in the future.
We won't, we won't, I hear what you're saying, but we won't have a choice because there won't be any money left, right?
Correct. Initially, when we, our initial run, it was 37% increase of a levy. And that just. I didn't want to bring that to the council for an increase. But that was the that was our thought to, to use that as a, as a short term solution.
Speak to like that, that initial thought, you didn't want to bring that much of an increase in taxes to us. And so we found other ways. Was there conversation about reducing the expenses?
We have. So last year, you can look, we funded roughly 1.8 million in CIP. Well, right now we're at a, a rough number, about 1.4. But this is a pretty bearable in CIP request. This is vehicles. Which vehicles, it is grant match programs, it is dollars for the pedestrian bridge, it is downtown street lighting. I mean, these are things that we're looking at. If we put them off, it's only going to cost us more in the long run. And that's the, we can look at that, if council, you can look at that again, if there's more items that we want to cut or reduce from there, that would lessen this ask. And again, as the years two, three and four, I mean, those are just examples, nothing here is set in stone. We're just giving you what is possible. And again, it's with the idea of lessening the impact to the taxpayers. And our, I, the goal is to slowly integrate this into a general levy to fully fund this with a general levy and not have to supplement it with any, that looks like any other increases to the levy year after year after year. Right. Well, increases to the levy, but we're also anticipating growth in the community. So if you look at this year taxable, our market value has increased roughly a million dollars. Last year, we were a little over a million dollars in growth. So our, our community is continually growing. The, the city hall street debt is a really good example. City, city hall debt is a good example of what that growth looks like on a smaller scale. So in 2022, when we levied three mills for city hall, that was $475,000. Or 20, in 2023, same mill rate, just capturing growth, we're at 525. Or same mill rate, now capturing 555. So as we, our community grows, that tax, that taxable market is, is growing with us. So we could also expect expenses to grow as the community grows as well. Yes, just like inflation, we're not, we're not immune to inflation.
Okay, so this process, how do you, how do you see this going? I mean, I know in years past, we've jumped all over. Somebody said, well, what about this item? And what about this item? I'm a little more kind of chronological and, okay. Are we, can we just start at the top? I mean, are we thinking we're going to go item by item and then go to the detail?
Well, one thing that we did too is you got to remember that we had said that there were some departments that were underfunded. They weren't making, they were, so we brought them to the budget that they need. So that's what increased here also was, so now if you think about it long term, now we've got that, we've got that budget number now to where it's like realistic. So over time now, that's still going to be the same, right? And it's just going to increase slightly because of inflation factors or whatever. Or you add somebody new, you add a new staff to it, right? We also know what our 2025 salary expenses are going to be because we've got a three year contract. So I know what 2024 is. You know what the, we also will be talking about our wage comprehensive plan that's coming in, that we need to have come into effect. That also is part of this. And we also know what 2025, so we, you know, really, we've, because in 2023, it was a 26% 25% increase, we've gotten it down to 11.
12.
But we've also gone back and said to departments, everybody's got to cut 10%. And then they go to their budgets and they slice and dice, you know, we're going to take this clothing item out or this piece of equipment or whatever. I mean, are we looking at doing that or are we saying at this level what those are going to be? I just want to know what, how we're going to do this process.
I'm going to agree with Julie that I think when I look at this and I look at a line item, I mean, in general, I mean, what you're talking about is general terms. I get that. But if you, you know, if we go through the revenues to understand and we go through each line item in the office and expenses, it's not going to take that long. But we have a million 757,000 dollar increase in our operating departments. And there's reasons for that, but if we go through the line items, we would probably understand what those reasons are. And like Julie said, we may say, go back and cut 10% out. What would we be doing if we had to do that? Because we, we have done that in the past. And then you come back and you realize we can't do some of those things. Or maybe we can wait a year or two for something else. We've got funds coming from other places that we looked at. The public safety funds are coming in. Is there something we can do? Police department is a million dollar, almost a million one change. Is there something we can do? And I know they can't be used for certain things and for other things. So those are my two, my, some of my questions. And then is the SROs, is that amount that we're, I mean, is that been reflected in that or is that in 23? Or have we built in 24, what we think we might keep? And I, I just think we got to walk through it because it's too much of a. So you can't, you can't by line there. So if you want to go, I mean, is there a particular department that you want to look at first? And then do you want to look at anything that's over? You know, a hundred thousand dollars? I actually have a few questions on the revenues before we get into the expenses.
Now, have you guys already done this? I mean, you've gone the line by line and did this?
Okay. So you have to bring us along. You have to bring us along. I think it's the best way to say it.
So we're basically, we're going to just rethink what you guys already thought through. That's all right. Okay.
Only mildly insulting to them, right?
Oh, yeah. We want you to know.
Right. And what may seem logical to us, you could go, but then there's this, that's.
Are you willing to just walk through quickly? Have any new lines? You, you want us to ask the questions or do you just want to go line by line? Well.
Yeah.
You have to understand the revenues.
Okay.
To understand that.
Right.
You know, if you want, you all have your packet here. If you want to go line by line on the packet, maybe that's what you want to do. Well, I'm looking at the summary sheets and. Yep. So what's your first question? The property taxes, it says it's a 9.18% change. Yep. So that's a combination of the increase in values and what we're proposing to increase. That's.
Correct. So that, the property tax, you can pull up.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
On page one, the seventh, excuse me.
It'd be like on page seven.
So what makes up that nine three, 9.3 million? The first one is the current ad delorm. That's our property tax. I mean, that's the, so what was the, under the department request line, the 9.218? And then the mayor proposed, that was the couple hundred thousand dollar decrease. The next is the delinquent taxes. So this would be taxes that was uncollected from years past, delinquent property taxes.
Just to clarify, the revised budget, so the department requests and the mayor's request, it's, it's the revised budget that we're looking at, right?
You're looking at the, no, you're looking at the mayor's proposed.
For this to the right.
That doesn't correspond to Okay.
So the, the revised budget is revised for 2023.
20, okay.
Yeah. So that we're looking at the very far right hand column. Yep. So 23 compared to 24 would be the revised budget versus the mayor proposed columns. I guess we're going to draw the line. The actual dollars as of 9/30 is how much we've spent or received this year. So the delinquent tax, we're, we're budgeting a hundred thousand dollars of taxes that are going to be paid to the county that'll be settled to the city for years prior that was unpaid. So that in the years past, it fluctuates roughly a hundred thousand. So that we put the number at 100. The franchise fee, and that, that could be another topic of discussion, is we do currently have franchise fee for the MUC and we do not for the gas company. And we can do that.
That's something that I want the council to consider over the next year.
We talked about that in the past.
Well, we talked about it when I was on the council, many years ago. And I went to Big Flaherty and they gave me an opinion saying that if the gas company is utilizing your right wing, they should be paying a fee for using right wing.
And the timeframe to do that, as we talked about it.
We can do it at any time.
But it takes about six.
The franchise agreement actually we need to look at right now because it is due, it ends March 2024.
That's the, that's what?
That's your franchise agreement that you already have in place.
Or who?
You already have a franchise agreement with Centerpoint Energy, no matter what. It's just that we don't have any, we're not collecting any dollars for that franchise agreement. Because you always enter into a franchise agreement with any other utility that is putting something into your, like the cable companies or whatever. And so that agreement ends March of 2024. So we already are in that window where we have to look at that. And now we can put in a dollar amount that we would like, put in a flat amount or, I mean, we, we've got several scenarios that we can do with that. So we can have so much for residential, you can have so much for get small businesses and you can have so much for your larger users.
Would that become this indirect tax? I mean, they're not going to eat that, they're going to pass that on.
That's what it is.
Who do we get franchise fees from besides?
Spectrum.
Spectrum and the utilities.
We get peg fees from
Well, it's in this, it's in this, it's in this, oh, right?
MUC, okay.
And the MUC shows that in the franchise fee, none of them are governmental?
They also pay, they also pay us for that as well. Yes. There's an intergovernmental payment they make to the county through the city as well.
Okay, so they pay us, they don't pay us a franchise utilities.
It's the four dollar.
Yeah, they call it a franchise fee.
On your utility bill, it's a four dollar thing.
On the utility bill that we've called
Yeah, it's still that bad. Okay.
And that's, and so that is reflected where?
This is, yeah, that's
Is that the 230,000?
Yeah, I think that's peg fees.
Energy. Set the ball, transfer. Because I think they
I think that goes
That they pay wastewater. So it might not be shown here. This is generally paid away.
230,000 is peg fees.
Got it. Peg fees from cable.
Okay.
I've asked this before.
MUC.
This comes in. MUC's franchise fees that they charge on your utility bill goes to the enterprise of the wastewater and then comes back through transfers from the enterprise.
So if we could or should be charging what, Madagascar or Centerpoint?
Centerpoint.
Centerpoint. Why haven't we done it in the past?
Council's never paid, passed an ordinance to do it. That's why.
And we haven't, we've talked about it. And why haven't, why, why wouldn't that process have started? Why would that have been put in motion?
It was put in motion, what year was it? 47 or something like that? But it was never finished.
Well, I think, I think the council voted it down a couple of times. And then a couple of times, we talked about putting in the budget, but it wasn't started soon enough to do it. And so then that conversation, like Julie's saying.
Then, then it's like, if it can't be started until March or April. No, and why in March, and what I'm just throwing out a thought. So then why in March and April of that next year, why wasn't it initiated? That's, I mean, that's like my question.
Most of the time, the council wasn't in agreement with proposition of, because of the same thing.
Because it's just, it's, we feel like we're just putting another tax on the citizens.
Well, and it raises rent. I mean, because everybody transfers into something. So it has, it has a cause and effect. So if we were to say, let's do a franchise fee, could we say that we want it implemented by June of next year and put six months worth of income in for it? As a possibility and how much?
It would probably actually be, since the ordinance ends March of 2024, you have to pass the ordinance by March.
Talking about one that I haven't been collecting on.
That's the one.
Okay.
It's the same one. It also is in the same ordinance.
They've just never been included in that order.
Correct. There's never been a payment for franchisees through that ordinance.
You're going to have to negotiate franchise.
Yes. We can pretty much tell, we tell them what we if the council says how much you want to, if you say how much you want to earn from it, then we can come up with it out or we can come up with what that value amounts. If we say we want to put residents at $2 or 2.50, but we want small businesses at $5 and we want large businesses at $25 and it's per meter. That we can do that too.
It, it seems like the estimate, or what I'm remembering is we talked about like $250,000.
Is what it would bring in?
Well, just that
Whatever dollar amount you want, it's
And the conversation then goes back to the chicken or the egg. Where do you get the money? Are you going to raise taxes? Are you going to raise fees to, you know, kind of that back and forth? And who does it affect?
That's my fear is that we'd end up costing people more potentially.
I don't know.
Yeah.
And it, you know, it's back to who pays the real estate taxes? And who pays the, they're sometimes different, different.
So just as, just as an example, this is just a revenue model. If you look at number two, the lower one. Example, this is just numbers. So there's roughly 6,100 residential units that have a connection with Centerpoint. If there was a flat, $8.50 fee on their bill for that, small business would be the commercial A, a $16 flat fee and your larger business, $40 flat fee. It'd be about a million dollars for the city. A franchise fee every year as an example. Now, if that number is way too high, if it's way too low, I mean, that's for us to, for the council to give staff direction on what you'd like to see. It's a pass through. So what Centerpoint is largely okay with whatever that dollar. The revenue number one, prediction model number one is based off of rates, but I think, we think it's, might be cleaner to just do flat fees.
I mean, if you, yeah, if you put in a dollar amount of $250,000 that you want to collect, you don't tell us how much each meter should be charged.
Just as an example at this point.
But we think that, you know, basically your residents usually aren't charged as much as your large users. Or your larger users more, because they use
So, okay. So what's the difference? Is that common? Is that commercial A?
Yeah.
There's a swing cup and do, do you need that increase?
Just be like your, the size of the operation.
Okay.
There's some information on here we probably won't share just because it's with Centerpoint, but this is just some prediction models. At least off the number of users. This is, I guess, this is just an example of what it could look like. And this number can change. If you want it to be $2, it could be $2. And it could be, but I mean, that cuts it in half for people. So I think there, the proposed ordinance in 2007, that was introduced but never passed as like a four, $4 for residential all the way up to like $20, $30. So just kind of playing, starting with those as our base numbers from 15 years ago. I mean, costs go up, so that's kind of where we're, again, if it's the council only wants to plug to half a million, then we make those numbers work, but
So what have you guys discussed in that?
We got this today, so.
So you're hearing our 20-minute discussion.
Alexandria, city of Alexandria is 5%.
That they do for their
Franchise.
Just for the, the gas?
Yes.
Some liquid, okay. Do they also have the other utility one?
That it doesn't tell.
I can tell you spicy. Spicy, it has electric and gas.
Okay.
And it's a flat amount.
But does it, based on the average home, you did 4%? Like Alexandria? An annual amount?
Four dollars. That'd be four and a half percent with four dollars. And this is just a rough estimate.
So four times 12.
Yeah, $4 a month.
$4 a month. So four times 12.
So that'd be 4.5%.
All it talks about is Centerpoint. But I was looking at the agreement, so it would be addressing Center.
I mean, we, we can continue the discussions because I would like a special session on the October 23rd also. Because we would like to talk about the little session on the wage study.
Okay.
So we can go, continue going through this and then we can, I mean, that's at today.
But that's a big one.
Oh, yes. Yes. Yeah.
Because right now I'm kind of
Because we need to, because the ordinance needs to be had. I mean, we need to have the ordinance no matter what. So it certainly is going to be I mean, it's timely.
The, the $2 for residential, I mean, well, you just had up on that screen prior to the adjustment. I thought that went through.
And then that, that, because that was a half a million, right?
Yeah. And that can, these can all be adjusted. That, that kind of takes care of the property tax portion of it. The next would be our licenses, permits. This is going to be our liquor licenses, our cafe, restaurant, our off sale wine, all of our general permits. I'd say the big driver here would be our liquor licenses for our liquor stores and our restaurants. On the bottom here is also going to be our THC licenses as well. Those did increase THC is probably the driver of that from 50,000. Next year, we're predicting, we're budgeting for $72,000 revenues might increase in that.
Yeah. I mean, if there is any permits that you want to, because this is the time in this discussion also, because we'll be bringing the ordinance for permit fees and things like that. So if you're thinking that we need to increase any permits, we don't have time to do that also.
THC caps, I never really, like, we have any.
I see caps.
We do, but we haven't received any revenue for it this year.
It seems like there should be more mobile food trucks.
Isn't it? If they're included in the festival development.
Okay.
So it's only like once Foxhole had their, their events, then there was a, they had to get a few.
Come back this year.
That's private.
So like if somebody hires a food truck, a graduation party, that's not coming.
It's only if they're operating on the city property.
I was thinking it was a fee we were charging a food truck to get a license. To be able to do all these things at the community. I'm like, we have more than one food truck.
It's to have them sit on city property. But if they're on private property, then we don't charge them.
At Rock and Robbins and the Black Party for Wimmerfest, those, those events charge their own fee. They don't have to get a special money from.
Carnival permits are
They are. The what?
Financial permits, $150,000.
So have we done in the building permits with everything? The, all the growths that got done this year and last year, is that, are we anticipating reflecting that's probably going to go down for next year? Did we take that into account?
We kept it at $350,000. As of the end of September, I think we are over $400,000 or closer to half a million dollars for this year. So we, we did keep it at 350. Yeah, it's hard to predict that part. I mean, we don't know what, it's going to go on and we don't know if it is a natural, like a hailstorm to go on.
I've just never seen that many rough skin.
We anticipate though that there's going to be some commercial building next year.
Yep. And just this last week, we issued another one for over a hundred thousand dollars for another development coming.
Sure.
I mean, it's, it can pick up that quick. Yep.
Sure.
The only thing to note on that, the sack and whack, the sewer and water connections for those commercials, they go into the community investment fund and not into the general fund. So when you see the building report and you see the year-to-date, it isn't a true one-to-one relationship or fund because some of the sewer and water connections go into the community investment fund.
Wow. But that, okay, which should build that up when we say that we're taking away from that? Because I'm thinking with all of the developments between the apartment complexes and the big business coming in.
But some of the sense I can't
But aren't you talking about going with any investment funds? So why would we be putting money into it?
Well, and that's, and that graph is, is showing zero growth. And there, there is money, as bonds, money will move into there as well from the bond fund. So that, that is a worst-case scenario, that graph. So that's another council, if council doesn't wish to continue doing Uh, so that's another council. If council doesn't wish to continue doing that, we can put it to the general fund too. It's.
Okay, my, okay, maybe I'm confusing this a little bit differently, but my understanding was that was, we had to keep that at a certain level and we are down to the level that we want to be able to take from it. Was that a difference?
That was our, was our savings account.
Okay.
So the C, the community investment fund is what the, what the city has historically used to pay for street improvement projects up until 2020.
2022.
So, yeah.
What you're, what you're asking us to use, take money out for, for five years. And we wouldn't be using that for street anymore. Once those bonds are paid off, correct?
Correct.
Then why are we putting?
That's a good question. And that's just, I would say it's past practice and that's something that we're looking at changing and bringing recommendations back to the council. Change those practices. So we want to get away. Maybe we want to look at getting away from using the, the investment, community investment fund because it's not sustainable for future projects. You, you saw the, the bond payment for next year is $500,000 for 15 years. I mean, the, the investment fund in its current state can't sustain.
So how much money is thrown into that account if we said, don't do that anymore? How much money would it be gone there?
That's, that's such a, some years there isn't any sewer and water connection fees. Some years like this year, we had two substantial deposits, you know, two of $100,000. Um, but other years, if there is, you know, like we've had some larger developments in town with the.
So we can't say, let's budget for $500,000 in that, that category.
We do as of coming year, we were asked you to put a budget number on it.
For the coming year? I guess I would only put a budget number on it about $50,000. That's, that's all I would put on.
Because even when a resident builds, they don't pay sack and lack fees.
Right.
Okay, so, but I think businesses that Karen Backer talks about that are coming or in the process and what's going to happen in industrial park. Aren't we just anticipating that those will be, but not next year? Okay, really? No. Are those also tied up?
I would say they're going to be building 2025. If they pay for a permit, it's going to be late next year and they're not going to start doing it. I mean, it's not going to be, I'd be surprised if it's a FedEx thing where they're going to putting out heaters and filling the ground and moving dirt. Okay, okay. Because it's going to take some time. I mean.
What about, what about?
There's only one else there that I think might be building, but it's not going to be a permanent structure yet.
What about these assisted living facilities?
Uh, right now, I'm not sure where they're at. I'm going to, because we haven't heard of, there's no sale of properties yet.
Okay.
And other than. As, as bonds get paid off, the, any excess dollars in that bond fund would go there. We're not, yeah, we're not scheduled to pay any off next year because a couple of years ago, the council paid a couple off early. So therefore we're kind of going to go up just not to be, with the time. So it's like $50,000 if we wanted it. Yes, correct. So it's not, it's, it's hard to budget a meaningful dollar amount or, yeah.
Yeah, our next bond pay, I mean, our 16 bond is, isn't due to come off till 2025. So I don't know. I mean, if we look at it, if that bond, if that, if we have cash that is paid off at this February, it would save us possibly about, no. But anyways. That bond funds out.
Sure.
So.
What are ROW?
I'm.
What's that?
What, okay.
ROW.
Right away. Right away permits.
Okay. Excavators. Is there anything else that doesn't go into the general fund that we charge for this and place somewhere else?
If they go anywhere else, they're going to the enterprise fund. No fees would just go gradually to another.
When you guys were going through this and discussing all of these, and when you did your budget and then proposed we discuss it some more, is there some items where you go, well, let's see what the council thinks about that. And if they bring it up?
I thought the finance committee instead too.
Yeah, so.
Never heard of discussion.
Really? Okay. Okay, so then.
I honestly can't think of one that would be a special area. It's not in.
Okay, but then I'm thinking, okay, so then when we get to an item, are you, are you ever going to say, well, this is one we really discussed. We don't know which way we want, you know, which, oh, what do you guys think? I mean, is that the kind of discussion we're going to have here?
If anything, it wouldn't be in the revenue side.
Yeah, right.
Right, right.
Okay, you touched briefly on why Civic Center revenue is down almost 30%. Yes. So, so I'm sorry.
I want to go to intergovernmental, which is next.
Will you jump it down to?
Sorry, get my civic.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, intergovernmental, I mean, we got over almost a million dollars more in LGA.
Yep.
Which we're probably aren't going to get an increase like that again. With that, so that, I mean, that to me is eye opening that no matter where we're at, we still, we already got another million dollars in revenue that we're spending. Where is the hospital revenue that we get?
That, that number is.
I just didn't, I didn't see it.
Caris inter transfer, just page 12, 1012.
Yeah.
60.
Page 18.
It's in, it's.
Page 18 on the back and 12 on our.
Okay.
Where is it? Top of page 12 or bottom of the page 18?
On these, on the ones we got printed out, it's page 12.
Well, at the top.
At the very bottom of the page. But then, yeah, fine item is in the one-on-one columns at the very bottom.
It says stingers off field, right?
Um, probably, probably keep going then to 18 at the back. Those are another. Your other sources, not intergovernmental.
Second to the bottom.
Because where the utility shows up too.
Nope, utilities.
No.
Okay.
Yeah. Caris is not part of the government. Yeah.
One thing staff did discuss, their attention to the contributions and donations, that was the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant for cultural diversity, which $450,000 was the grant. And we, staff did just use that divided in three years, 153 times. So that could be another direction, uh, 3006.
It's just right above your carousel.
Right here. So we, we just took one third of the grant for three years. So that could be another adjustment if council wishes to spend that at a different rate. Uh, but it has to be used up. Is there a time?
No, no, there's no time.
Out of time.
It's not a grant.
We made a commitment for three years, right? We made a commitment with that for at least three years, right?
We didn't have to make a commitment. They just gave us $450,000. There was no straight cash to it.
When we just said we would make, we made a commitment for three.
We just said we would use it over time. We would slowly bring it into the budget so that we would have a position funded to taxes.
So help me understand how she, that, so I mean, we've got multiple other sources of over 100K here, including that Caris one that's quite a bit over 100K. Yep. On the sheet, it says other sources, 20,000.
Yeah, that was, is that what's reflected under miscellaneous revenue? Instead. I think.
Miscellaneous, yeah. It's under miscellaneous revenue is the overarching header, the, the bigger. So it's miscellaneous and then other sources within miscellaneous, there's subsections within there. So it's, we're on the second to the bottom.
So how come civic centers spending has increased 270,000, but then revenue went down after 59?
The, on the expense side of it, the, the whole thought of this building, Civic Center, Rec Center, Blue Line Center, we're putting most of the expenses towards Civic Center just because there's one meter for utilities. So almost the expenses are going to go to just the Civic Center department, if you will. Then Maykal can talk a little bit more on the revenue side of it. But the thought for the expenses was just to kind of combine them, make it a little bit more easy to read because our utilities are in that way.
So just for this year, it would seem like it alone?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, if you really look on page eight there of your printed copy. Okay, look on page eight on the printed copy, I can be looking on the, from the civic plus page plus. And so you see the total civic center charges there. And this year's budget was revised to 542,000. I think it was just way over budgeted for one thing. If you look up to dry floor events on page seven, it has 189,000 just for dry floor events for this year. And we haven't, I mean, we won't, we're only have 20,000 for dry floor events. So there's no way we're going to have $189,000 for dry floor events here. So we, we put it back down to 20,000. And so that then drop that all down to 160, drop by $160,000. Realistically, 382 is probably a more realistic revenue dollar among them.
This isn't something where if we're not meeting our assumed events, right? Like we're not coming, we're close to that, that this isn't something where then we're not staffed and can pull back on staff. Like it seems to me like if we're not, we're not using the building as much as we.
We've only added one staff person to the whole civic center operation, event center for this and for parks. And then also, you know, we shifted some things off of parks, public work staff over to parks and rec two. For one thing, the aquatic center or public work staff does no longer do the aquatic center anymore either. So those costs now are reflected probably more true into the park and rec side of it.
But the expenses are up 217,000 and the revenue is down 159,000. That's a half a million dollars. That's how it's affecting the budget. That's a lot.
Then on the other side, you'd also see public works also being dropped. I mean, if you look side by side, there's other things that the public works department have been doing that's under park works.
You definitely. For the increase in expenses then.
Like the event center is dropping a lot on expenses. Right? But it gets a 94% increase for the event center. Helps to explain, from what you were explaining about utilities makes sense. We're more or less just trying to, instead of having the three departments for one building, we're just trying to combine things to make it a little more easier to manage.
Okay, so there wasn't any drastic reason or decline in enrollment in programming or increase in programming or anything like that?
Programming is.
It was just really shuffling things to be more reflective.
Right. I think you can see the programming dollars on the revenues. The dollar ballad dollars, a big decrease in the dollar ballad, which was surprising, but as far as programming, I don't think that, you know, we received no donations either this year. But adult basketball and adult volleyball were really the ones that really had a dip in their dollars from the last two years. They lost. $1,000. But that's on page eights.
Yeah, what happened with the volleyball?
I don't know. I mean, it's dropped, I mean, the last, the last two years it's been over $5,000 and this year it's only 973. But you do have now ball coming in, so you'll have more registered for volleyball.
Just last plane, yeah, it's.
It's just some.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Is there, is there a, um, a reason or the thought process for us to just look at what it's costing us for parks and rec, for example, pool department? I mean, because I know the pool costs this money. And, um, you know, if we put those totals together, that's a huge, huge amount.
Is the aquatic center, I just can't even believe that I'm asking, can ask this, but is the aquatic center still $3 to begin?
I believe so.
I believe so.
And I, I know part of the chart and I love that, that she wanted it to be affordable for everybody. It's been $3 since it all. Has there ever been any discussion?
That's part of the ordinance and fees. So when the rates come up in the ordinance for fees, there should be those discussions.
Seems like if inflation is affecting everything, it should also be affecting, you know, those rates for, for all of the programming. Here's my question too. Have I reading this right? We're, we're not even into the fourth quarter for the numbers that are before us and we've already exceeded the budgeted income for all of those parks and rec fees. And.
Where, page are you on?
The total on page nine here. And so actual dollars is 220,000. Budget for the year was 169 and we're budgeting for next year 193, which we've already exceeded by 30A and we sell months to go in the year. Why, why are we so conservative with the number in the budget for next year? Yes, we're just conservative overall. Programming numbers, I mean, it's participation. If all the kids and adults don't enroll, those numbers aren't there next year. But if you want, we can increase somewhere. We are just being conservative. Yep. Like, I mean, that, that is the reason I better not explain another. Let me take a few gymnastics, for instance, 9012, 33. So then, I mean, so we put at 25, we didn't want to. We don't know what next year brings. It might continue that up for time. We, it's just.
That's, I can, I can not know what was there. I mean, they all of a sudden brought in the, the high school is trying to do a leader program, really up their game with their gymnastics.
Gymnastics alone is, I mean, that's the difference in your.
Yeah.
But it, it, I just following along with it. We're decreasing revenues, but our expenses are increasing. A lot. A lot.
Well.
If, if you want us to adjust the revenues, that, I mean, that's something we could do, it's just, it's hard to overstate the revenue speaks if they don't come in, then we're spending on balance, that's the only.
But is it safe to say, like, and Julie had brought up before, what if we just said, okay, take ten percent out of your budget and expenses? And see what you can do to get it to change revenues, I, I'm, I'm just curious, overall, the, it's a lot of money. And, and we, and, you know, catch twenty two there, and that's known for our programs too, so can we afford to do them?
Over balance here, it's a recreation and events center. It's a hundred and seventy eight thousand on, on bouncing around, expenditure shows a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollar decrease. That increase is largely split to the civic center in the, some to the park and recreation department, so I mean, it's not a one for one, but there's, it's being shared.
But still, a two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase in overall expenses. Two hundred and fifty nine thousand.
Utilities are, are good.
And then also the insurance or the, the league, um, just the new structure itself. The increase on the insurance of it for the, wasn't.
Disco.
Yep, yep.
So.
Wasn't accounted for?
Probably. That was a, I do remember that one being a sizable increase though, and, um, so that we, we looked into it and it was a insurance related expense.
But I think this is an example, we had this conversation back when we were talking about this, low cost and sales tax paid for this. But there were no operational costs that were built in anywhere. So it paid for the structure, but it didn't pay for the cost of what it was going to need to operate any of these things.
Which, something tells me this probably pretty typical.
Yep.
It's just that, yeah, that, and then they just, that you have a city.
Yes, you know, the, the government.
Put it down it.
The resident put it down it, so this is what happened. Then they vote, when they vote on that, then they also vote to say, yes, we'll take on the maintenance of that.
That was not a discussion, right, but it was also a discussion at the state level, which is one of the concerns with low cost sales tax, right, is how do you pay for it?
Yes, Marv would say, you, uh, you can go broke on free stuff. And people give you free buildings and free things and, but. Okay.
Is there any other, anything else on the revenue, sorry, I mean.
What is public, public safety revenue?
We stay there, fire stay there.
And if I, I asked this question already, and I'm gonna have to get money that we're going to receive for public safety at the end of this year.
We still not?
No.
No, uh.
And that would not, that would not be in this.
Viewing it as one time spending. It can't be used for salaries, it can't be used for structures. We're looking at more along the lines, and this will of course will be brought to the council, but equipment, uh, radios need to be replaced.
What about NF cons?
Fire truck.
Yep.
What about police cars?
Yep, that's something we can come up, the capital improvement plan.
So, we, the ladder trucks is approaching end of life, one point seven million dollar vehicle. We're trying to structure a way to replace any radios for both the fire department, police department. And potentially come up with a down payment on fire truck. I just kind of spend our money three times over, just coming up with ideas, but if we're thinking of one time spending, how can we stretch the life of this dollar out? Probably on this bigger ticket items.
I just feel like, whether it was the art funds or anything else that came after any natural disaster, seems to be like that's when a lot of federal money comes in for the radio equipment. Did we miss a boat?
No, any of that?
We didn't get any.
It just.
We put in more, okay.
Yep.
You, grant money, yeah, we put in for the radios waiting.
Fire chief just got, well, I think all the grand dollars have been allocated, and well, it was not on the allocation.
Okay.
So I don't know that if we've received that.
We have, as I think like, I know we missed a deadline or something.
Yeah, there was something like that, but the last two years I think we put in, last year they didn't have allocation for radios.
But we did get grant money for something.
That was a turnout here?
True. Yeah.
No, we used our.
Yeah, okay.
I thought we got a grant, I thought we got a grant.
Council package.
Is there, is there?
Could we have that conversation, give you guys a chance to, but could we have that conversation as part of the budgeting process?
Yeah, if we would.
It was in your, in the September council package. Our worksheet, we didn't talk about it, but.
We have a conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there, is there any other grant opportunities, do we have any staff that specifically look at that and?
Well, I'm getting grant things all the time, I get them like daily as well. Yeah, and we're getting them from David Church, so we could, we could cut that out too, we could have our lobbyist power. Look at the lobbyists, but if there's something on a general level with things coming up, one thing, safety is for all. Probably, that's another thing that we should have then look at, the other thing, let's forget the tournament. And, and also, who's the staff person that that looks at? Kyle? We can handle that, you know, I, I pass them off, and then if I know what staff, because like if it's housing, I send it off to Jill Banks. I said, take a look at this, Jill, tell me what you think. Can we find something for this, can we do this, can we, you know, what help can we need, so. I pass them off to the staff that I think should review them, and let us know, and then you can, you know, just same for park and rec with Rob. You know, Rob, here's this one, what do you think, here's the V and R one, I know this is coming due, can we get into this, and so. It goes off to the departments.
Okay, back to, just back to revenue, the last one that we kind of looked at as miscellaneous revenue. What are contributions and donations, is that just what we view on a quarterly basis and they total up that much money, or is there something else?
Was that the hundred fifty thousand? That's the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant that was.
Thank you, I forgot that. Insurance reimbursements and insurance pass through is another big figure to show in there. Actual, from this year to next year, we're quite a change.
So the insurance reimbursements is another, it's a tough one to budget for. Based on claims from the previous year, um, right, is that gonna, it's a reimbursement league itself, so we did have a sizable dollar amount in twenty twenty three, but it's, it's tough to budget for that for next year, because we don't know, it might be a zero. I mean, so it's.
Or it might have.
Or it might have, yeah, that'd be expensive.
It, uh, that lumping in that miscellaneous revenue, um, maybe with our new system, we will break out some of that.
And we'll be able to pull that out hopefully on demand, too, we'll break it down.
You, we'll be able to pull that particular count out and break it down and show you those, but, um, as far as lines, no, we're not gonna. We don't want to have line after line after line after line, that's not the idea, try to control it. But we would, we're obviously having project budgeting also, so if we have a project, we can call up that project, Joe, and see. It does line by line.
It does feel like though, when a number is off a million dollars, that is Eric's knowing what's.
This is the transfer from NUC every year. Two point one million.
And where is that?
In transfers.
So in transfers.
So that stayed two point one three six million for the last few years, it might be longer, NUC.
At the bottom.
Thirteen.
Three hundred and seventy six of the transfer in from wastewater treatment plant to the general fund.
That is, that doesn't happen till the end of the year, obviously.
Yeah.
Zero actual dollars through August thirty first.
Oh, uh, it's in September, it took place, and so, um, we did a lot of. Yeah, so this, this sheet on the, on the screen here is showing that, so the transfer did, that's just an internal, internal transfer that we can do, um, so. And that is to offset, um, tax burden. This transfer in from the community investment fund is, um, to help offset some public works for the crack ceiling is, uh, as our streets, we've redone them. The estimate for next year to do the crack seal is about four hundred and some thousand dollars, so we're once again soften that, um, taking half of it from supplement, the investment fund, was a, was a thought. Um, just, I remember it was four hundred, just over four hundred, four hundred. Eight hundred, yeah, four hundred.
So just, yeah, you probably just said it and I was reading, but as a refresh, I mean, that was, because we upped that to try to eliminate some of the full reconstructs and.
Yeah, we had to keep up with what we've already. Steel coating in that.
Yeah, that can't be seen.
Years after, so.
I think next year's plan is Wake Land and the airport, a separate portion of that.
Yes.
Yeah, these are most of it, they're, they're almost.
Airport.
Steel called.
Yeah. There we go.
How was that gonna reflect on us? Passing through, yes.
And we probably don't get any lodging tax.
They might see something they like.
They could get lodging tax here though.
Or something.
That's what you should, you should be asking them to get the lodging tax.
Lodging tax, I haven't missed the conversation, what?
The lodging tax on the Tippitaka golf course. If they put a lodge in, they should be getting lodging, there should be a lodging tax.
Maybe you can't.
They're going to the same places they.
And I mentioned this yesterday.
Well, I'm thinking of the hotel in North End, London, or Southern.
And it was located there on Ivy twenty three.
And there, that is the Spizer.
Yes.
It is.
But, yeah, but it goes to the.
Okay, yeah, we did that.
Okay.
We digress.
Yes.
Expenses, am I on here, expenses?
We are.
Okay.
Um, one thing to point out on the city administrator portion, uh, for twenty twenty three, there were four staff, would be the administrator, operations director, the cultural diversity director, as well as the administrative assistant. For twenty twenty four, we are moving the cultural diversity to its own department, so that's why the decrease in, in the administrator's budget, so it's, it's not an elimination of a staff position, it's just a cleaning it up, putting in that.
I thought you guys all just took up. I thought, wow, they're really cutting their.
Yes, yes. That does explain that.
And then office supplies, small tools, those kind of things, they're all being shifted to a different department also.
Good, back at the top, the planning and departmental, departmental services. Is that, these figures we're looking at, take out what, the positions that you talked about?
I guess what on the top, on the very top, ACS financial system, what's the date on your? Oh, you're talking about that one, that, oh, I'm sorry, that, that does reflect the GIS stat not included and half of the billing clerk.
But it's still a hundred forty two thousand?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
Wage comp implementation, so, alright. What was that?
The wage comp implementation conference.
That's reflected through all these departments.
You say this a lot of times, is that gonna be mostly the answer for every single one of these departments that's up?
Twenty percent for almost all of them, yes.
Yes.
There's some outliers, um. Police, public works, legal. Uh, but, uh, elections. Why is engineering involved so much?
Because we don't have an engineering department.
Uh, good.
There's no staff, so.
Bring you to my next question, and we we pay bold and not make a large sum, could we save some money by hiring a city engineer? Back or, not against willing to make a job. Uh, but is there somebody that we could have on staff that could do some of the things we're paying bold and make to? Yeah.
That's less.
It's less.
Yes, I wish, but it would be bringing back the whole department. Because without having the whole department together, your engineer really can't do much. What I mean, you know, because is all he'd be doing, or she'd be doing is reviewing plans, site plans, finding department thing, you know. Uh, that's about it, because without having a surveyor, they're not going to be able to, you know, they're not going to be drawing any plans. So all plan development and all that would still fall under golden ink. So you gotta start with the whole department, bringing back the whole department, basically.
What, three?
Seven hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Less new software.
I guess, if we knew the software, because the reason for that is because the, the survey equipment and that that we have is outdated. And, um, it doesn't, it doesn't correspond with any other engineering firm either, so we'd want to bring back a software system that could be, so if we do have a surveyor, they go out and do survey work, then we can share that information with an outside firm.
Two questions on the engineering, the two hundred ninety seven that's there, that's just what we have to do, we have one staff?
No, like two seventy, it says professional services.
It is.
Yeah. It's professional services.
And then, we said no last year, but it was in the budget to do eight hundred seventy one thousand.
But it's the police department, yes. Can you just do it for all that?
Six months around, just on.
Page sixty?
Either here or there.
Either here or there.
So this, there are a couple of things here to, this is one of the departments that we wanted to bring in line to have an accurate representation, so. One of them to point out is our overtime for the police officers in twenty twenty one was about two hundred fifty thousand, twenty twenty two, two hundred thirty thousand. So budget this year at one eighty eight, so we, we wanted to bring that closer to twenty, to where we have more of an accurate representation. Same with our temp or our part-time employees, which would largely be our CSOs with this BS line, um. It's been over budgeted. Our, and pension, which would be our para and our, our other payrolls would, or have also been in the past historically over budgeted, the same with our insurance, so.
Which can you just explain? And thirty six? The top?
Yep, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, but next for the overtime.
Yep.
Should there be a balancing of like if we're four officers down, that that we're not paying out that salary as well? I mean, shouldn't they be balancing that way?
Not necessarily. Might have more officers to. Cover those shifts.
Right. So I can see where overtime's going to be more, but salary. It should be down because of empty positions.
Well, this salary also includes the implementation. The proposed salary is the implementation of the wage comp. So that increases your salary, your overtime, paying more, your pension contribution. So all those numbers go up as staff are paid.
This was one that the auto talked about where we've been over.
Correct.
Multiple years.
There's another piece here, um, out of the police department. This maintenance of structures, this hundred and seventy thousand dollar. Request is the city's portion for the law enforcement center in the past. Much hit for and we owe like this year for twenty twenty three with a hundred and sixty three thousand dollars.
That's not that you can't capitalize. We don't own it. Or do we? I mean.
No, we don't own it. It's a maintenance. It's the maintenance of the structure. I know a couple of years ago, they were talking about having to redo the roof.
And that was two ninety four.
Yeah, and as we were going to have to pay.
City did have a portion of that to pay for as well as the maintenance of the building. So after the bond is paid off. Then then the start of the maintenance for the structure. So that's. A significant change in the budget, but it's going to be something that we're looking at paying again next year. So I think. We should just have it in there as an expected expense. So is it is it a significant?
Okay, so if, you know, the roof was a was a two thousand twenty two one. Okay, what was two thousand twenty three that we paid a hundred and sixty three thousand? That was the maintenance bill from the county for the structure.
And the operation costs.
So they just, did they just decide they haven't been charged? I mean. To fifteen dollars in two thousand twenty one. No, in the past, we were paying the bond up. We were paying our share of the bond in the past. Okay. And that ended at twenty twenty one. Okay, twenty twenty two, we did the roof. In twenty twenty three, we started doing a maintenance contract with the county and that's now, but that is reflected. You probably said that, but I. I get it.
So that's.
That's all right. We've been talking about this a lot. So.
Is there anything we can do regarding how much overtime there has been? I mean, I know there's been multiple reasons for overtime. Is there anything we can do to? I don't want to say restrict or limit. Meaning where we ask them to be or things that we ask them to do.
We're short staffed.
That'd be my guess. We're.
No, but but we have police officers that we allow. I mean, we have a lot of things that go on that police officers. Are at, you know, to do. I'm just asking if that's. Who controls, who who controls that they can go into this or go to that or achieve this?
Sure. Bring budget in for those four officers next year.
Oh, yes.
But we're not going to hire.
Oh, I I.
I get that.
It's just that they've had some that they can. Done interviews and things like that. Now, when you get to the crack.
Right. I just wonder like, kind of what Julie was saying earlier with like. For budgeting purposes, do you budget to hire three of them? If you end up hiring four, great, do it because overtime's going down now through the budget. Maybe ends up being kind of a wash. I mean, I guess it's a budget philosophy question.
I like to budget.
Yeah, we don't.
We know we're going to have, we know we should have another staff. We know that. So we should always budget for the number of staff we always believe we could have there.
Pay for now or pay for the future. Sure, because then when we hire four, it's going to be in next year's budget for the increase.
Okay.
So but there are four in this year's budget for the.
It's a full to parts, budgeted full to part.
Um, and did who decided that we needed that amount? I mean, I remember we had a conversation about fireback fighters, but I don't remember having.
That's why our standard number and we're just not there. Yeah, I think so too. So they took, unless it was in twenty twenty one, there was a question. Because didn't Jim have a request for an additional officer in twenty twenty one? That sounds familiar. I think there was. Yeah, to just straighten out each shift that had four instead of just three. And. They would be able to cover for vacations and. And when. Sergeant Yankee retired, we never did hire him. For his position for a long time. Okay. We still don't. Reprovision position never built. Under of what's other services? On the thirty seven. The other thing too, you know, increase the revenues from the school district, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But we still have to have that conversation too. So that's a decrease of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of revenue. Yeah.
Where's the other revenue coming from?
Well, we're hoping that we get an agreement with the school.
Oh, that's I was gonna clarify. It's it's strictly the SRO.
And that would actually probably just be the second half of the year of twenty twenty four. Twenty first half. Okay, on page thirty seven, other services, zero three three nine. What what happened in twenty two that it was two hundred and four thousand? Is that another? Something. If it can happen there. Top part of that. I'm not sure. Yeah, you're on the right page.
Have to look back.
Okay, nothing jumps to the top.
Nothing comes to mind for twenty two.
Okay.
We're talking about a twenty one budget.
Oh, I do know. We have to pay off. Okay. Hot officer. Okay. Did that pay off? Okay. So it's, okay.
So clarify for me once more where we are with the budget and the SRO.
So for twenty twenty three, we have two hundred and thirty two thousand. The contract was for two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. The first bill was going to be sent out in July. The second bill is going to be sent out in December for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school district. We received a first half payment and then then. Correct, the council voted to, are we at a suspension right now to refund? So for next year in the budget for revenues would be is currently at one.
But we're still trying to negotiate the contract after December. There are other communities that are bringing their SRAs back. So there is still a possibility. That we won't have to pay the bill, right? If we keep negotiating.
Probably for the start of next school year.
No, I'm talking about the second half. This runs out.
Okay. I was thinking that would resolve itself until the legislature fixed it.
Well, there's no guarantee the legislature is going to fix. And so that's that's was my encouragement for us to be back there for us not to have to pick up the tab for that.
Where is that negotiation?
I haven't been around to have that. This has been asked.
This is the this is a conversation for you and Dr. Holmes to be having first. This is.
Yeah, you know, we'd have the chief and Dr. and Dr. Adams and. Probably our legal team also in that conversation. And their legal team. To see what we could come up.
So other figures that we negotiate with the school are in our budget. For ice time and for field time. What? I mean, I don't know what all of them are, but they're in our budget. So to have a summary of what our relationship is with the school. What are we getting and what are they getting? I mean, it used to be a back and forth for other things. That was settled on a quarterly basis when we had the community in wreck. And that was subjective to who charged what to who kind of thing and and who didn't charge to who. You know, some of those, but is that something that can be looked at or that we can look at too?
Okay. I don't think there was, because you just. You just approved the contract with the school district, what, two months ago?
June, yeah. Well, that was for the like a facility use agreement. But we can pull that in.
Other question on page thirty seven, um, insurance and bonds. In twenty one, it was thirteen thousand. Then in twenty two, it was seventy two thousand. Twenty three, actually down so far was eighty eight thousand. And then we're. We brought that down to forty thousand.
So that was budgeted for twenty twenty three. So for, we spent eighty eight thousand dollars this year and we're budgeting ninety for next. Just trying to. We we feel it was under budgeted for twenty three.
It was under budgeted. Why not so drastically from twenty one to twenty two? We increased this for the police department. Yeah, okay. So it was a new insurance kind of.
Memberships as well. Yep, so that Chief Philip did supply some data on that, um, increase of twenty four thousand dollars for an upcoming computer program renewals. And they're also having app subscriptions for their, some of their. It's a less expensive option than to actually buy it and it won't expire, spend off or support anymore. So it'd be more of an app subscription so that it's moving from a. Kind of moving line items towards a subscription membership instead of a purchase. So that would be the rationale for that increase. And I'd say that's a common trend amongst other departments as well, more of the subscription base versus the buying of programs more.
Now, instead of subscriptions, thinking of something that you're like a magazine or. Group or whatever, it's really our software systems.
Uh, Netflix or.
Ask. I'm going to say no.
That's that's question. Seems to me like some of this is my own bias and where I'm at, but it seems to me like what we've been doing for a while now, it's kind of poking around, seeing things that we're noticing. Asking you guys questions for something you worked on for weeks, right? And and you had the conversations three or four times. And certainly we should continue. To have some understanding for a lot of these line items. But at the end of the day, when I heard from Andre and Julie, like, I'm not comfortable with the increase. Where we're at at the moment, it doesn't seem like I'm going to trip over half a million dollars and magically solve this problem. So.
That we're going to find something new for us.
I mean, at at some point tonight, we need to just get to a point where we encourage you all to go back and and. And, you know, I've heard that ten percent number. That's the right figure, but I mean. What's the goal for tonight?
Good question.
But for me, it's, I think, understanding why. That they are. I'm still in this place that I don't. I don't see this year going to solve anything. I think next year is going to be worse.
Right, I agree.
We have, we're not solving anything. And so I, I mean, I don't think it hurts to go back and. At asking staff to do that. Ten percent is something we did a few years ago. So I don't know. And it it it's kind of a. At least back from my budgeting days, there's some places that there aren't. There isn't ten percent. But there's other places that maybe we have to look at. Maybe we just can't do some of these things. We have to be more. I don't know. But for me, I don't have a clue with some of them. I mean, why? You know, we're going to have to wait to do the salary part of it, but.
I was going to make, maybe you can't answer this, now that the comp worth increases, that's not going to be added. And also salaries are going to go up every year, but it's a bigger ball this time.
We'll have the discussion.
I'm still, you know, I look at our, what our coworkers do, we have enough staff. They're going up almost three quarters of a million dollars. I have no clue. Are we talking about, is that a salary? Just just salary adjustments or what else is in there? So. I think there's still some more uncovering to do with that. And but then I I do agree with you. They go back. Departments to take a look at what they can do.
Public Works was a significant road maintenance with the crack and chip seal was that four hundred thousand we mentioned? And that's a significant change. In the past years, it's been seventy ish thousand budgeted for that. So that is a. Pretty sizable change there. So that's going to be a lot. And then also the wages.
But you were talking about taking that four hundred thousand out of a different fund than than this.
No.
Hundred thousand to help offset the four hundred thousand dollar expense.
So the seven hundred is still the amount with two hundred coming from somewhere else?
The the seven hundred thousand dollar increase would be the whole expense, but there's a revenue coming to offset two hundred thousand of it.
So what? So the crack ceiling kind of feels a little ambiguous to say it belongs to public works. It feels like a street improvement kind of, kind of thing. I'm just curious.
But that is, but it's a maintenance thing. It's a maintenance thing. Public Works is street maintenance.
Classified as maintenance, not a.
It's not a capital improvement.
It's preservation of your.
Well, I know exactly what it is and I know we're behind and I know we need to do it, but you know, to to look at it and feel like, wow, Public Works is going up seven hundred thousand. It's deceiving. In that category.
Okay, so following, I don't know if I'm jumping here. Cutting in, are you done? Okay, if we, can we talk about fire protection?
You can go anywhere.
Okay. I understand why law enforcement went up, but I don't understand why fire protection went up eighteen percent.
That is insurance. Insurance, employee insurance coverage was as far as the under budgeted.
That was the big.
Budgeting about another hundred and forty thousand. I think.
Another employee. Okay.
Again.
Looking at the. Two seventy five. Salaries tempering.
That's your paid on call staff. That's all those, that's all.
That's the fireman.
Line is the four full times, the four.
Right. Not the regular full timers. But it seems like two hundred and seventy five is a little bit of a jump. We did talk about decreasing that.
Something internally, we just had a discussion, staff, you know, on on some of these outliers.
And we caught it. Talked about this afternoon.
Okay. So the, I, we think on the employee, excuse me, employer insurance. Is two seventy one to two ninety three. So we put that three hundred. That that includes the insurance for the work comp for the paid on call. And in the past, it looks like. And in the past, it looks like it might have been only budgeted for the full time. Ah, so we made it once again, just more realistic of what what our true expenses are. So it is a jump, but um. As you can see, the past twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Trying to run that in line to what our expenses will be for next year.
So we could. Probably tweak that to seventy five, but it's not a huge thing, but.
It helps something.
Yeah, every fifty thousand helps. And that being of an increase of the regular full time employees.
And that's going to be your wage comp numbers.
That.
Salaries.
Okay.
Wouldn't you bring us that? Are you going to look at? The possibility of not implementing that at all at one time?
We'll discuss that on the twenty third.
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to discuss those in close session.
Yeah, no, I under I understand that. And and maybe it's just a request to understand that. Okay?
So I gather our kind of our consensus is we'd like to try to tighten the belt. A little bit if we can.
Is ten percent.
At ten percent supply.
Is it? Is it?
Some ten percent what?
Oh, just going back. When we go back, we really at the end, we were already on an increase of like. One point.
One point six six.
Does that bring a better case to?
Uh, hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, no, it's.
Wow.
Yeah. Be at that pay. Hundred.
Right there.
So expenses, we have only actually increased the total. One point six six.
Three hundred fifty thousand, sorry. Tax impact. So tax impact that was at the September meeting that the preliminary was. So fifteen percent levy increase, the tax impact is roughly seven and a half. Um, with these adjustments that we've made, the levy with the one and a half salaries and the insurance contingencies were moved into a twelve point four seven. And the tax impact is just under five. Once again, with that. Assumption of zero dollar of your house not fluctuating at all. So I mean, that's. And we know that real estate didn't stay the same.
How much would we have to decrease to get down to a ten percent?
Percent levy increase. Two hundred fifty thousand. Two hundred fifty thousand dollar cut from from this would give us a nine point seven five levy increase, nine point seven five percent. Which would be the tax impact of.
Accent back.
Percent. Mill rate of. One point two seven five, two point, we could cut from capital improvements too to make that happen. So in that, we have budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund capital improvements. So that would be the rest of it coming to the community investment funds. So that'd be a.
So if we. In in the concept of we want you to decrease, I think there's a collective. Go back with that.
Or is there a a number that or?
That's what I'm just trying to.
Levy number that you want us to be at or under.
That's why I asked that. What is ten percent? You know, where, I mean, what would you have to do to get down below?
We have to decrease it to two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Or.
Get it below. Ten percent.
Extra or.
Increase.
Yep. Yeah.
Always increase revenues because we're gonna get it.
But we know already, well, if we did the, if we were considering the two percent, that's five hundred thousand. So if we were going to do the two percent on.
Franchise fees.
Actually, it's two dollars per year. Oh, that's essentially percent, two dollars, yeah.
For right well.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Could be, that could be better. You put that in here. At five hundred thirty three thousand dollars, I think is what it was. You put that into your budget then, and then that could, then you don't have to do anything else with your expenses because you've already covered it.
You said to me.
Do you need to fix another two hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Uh, he said to me today that residents see what I for. If, uh. Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. If the tax impact of the current. Isn't that, so our tax base has grown a little bit and our levy just has out outpaced it. So the actual impact would be above just under five, four point nine, four percent. And that's also based off the preliminary numbers on our tax base from the county. That's not fine. Yeah. So how can you run those numbers fast enough to give us the tax impact if we did the two percent franchise fee for residents and?
Two dollars per cent, you can do.
Very, yeah, yes, do that. So with two dollar, we can right do with it right here. Do you want to leave? The thing that just that this is for.
Yeah.
For this is a. So if we left left the current revenues and expenses the exact same and we did five hundred thirty four thousand. Just for. Kind of six point six six percent levy increase or a tax impact of minus point four eight.
Yeah, we did.
Because the tax capacity or our tax base is grown, has grown faster than our levy increase. Yeah. So then we'd have to go lower in taxes.
Oh, no, don't say it because I don't even like the fact that you guys are. But this is guess. This is a guess to me. This is a best guess.
Okay.
Or it has still could go up. See, if we were going to do like. Compromise happy medium thing. We could do one percent there or one dollar.
Well, this is gonna change every year.
Yeah.
Either.
Just one state.
So you want this to stay in effect for a while, right?
Okay, so. If we did one dollar, just as far as the impact on the taxpayers. If we did one dollar there and still came up, then we would maybe have to come up with, I'm I'm throwing out an estimate, hundred or hundred fifty thousand. And. Possible, um, yeah, already from fifty.
To distance. If you want to beat this number, then you should make sure you.
Cause then that is.
Think of longevity here.
Yeah.
With this number, right?
You shouldn't want to change this number year after year after year. It's not the idea that you want to keep this number for like five years. And then change it. You don't want to. Change this number. One dollar, just put it down to four hundred sixty thousand?
Yeah. Two thousand seven, that number was four dollars. We're thinking.
I think the two dollars is.
I think you should.
I think two dollars for residents.
Pretty common.
With that. Come with some different examples and why pick one or why we should want to be at two dollars.
We were just.
Why we should want to be at four dollars.
Yeah.
Cause what does that mean for this year? What does it mean for next year?
Well, it wouldn't change.
No, no, I'm saying we need to make sure if we're going to do this, that we pick the right number that will help us not just this year, but.
Like you said, here, here.
Yeah, we're not just picking another to solve today.
We've already done that.
So that's a great example of that is that helps out with capital.
Right.
And we're not, we're borrowing, taking less from the community investment fund and using. As an example, we could be using some of this for that instead. Borrow.
Yeah, my next question was gonna be, did you say we have two hundred and fifty thousand for capital improvements in this year?
Three.
Three fifty? So that's another one that I think we should look at the capital improvements to see if we can't just decrease. That among.
That's.
And and if we start as an example.
Additional. Workshops. So that's, yes, that's one of the ones on those additional workshops.
So we aren't going to do it tonight.
Well, if you want, you can look at it right now. You've got them.
No, I know. I'm I know.
So we don't need to. I just.
I don't need to do it tonight. I just think that it makes sense for us to look at what we can do that.
What? And I'm I'm thinking about what kind of a pace are we looking at here for things or how much of this we're going to nitpick through and what's the goal? Um, so, yeah, to me, for a concrete conversation is we got to find two hundred fifty thousand. That I can do. And I can go back to here and think, okay, can we find ten thousand here? Can we do fifteen thousand there? Um. I just, I I I need to.
I feel.
Understand what it is. I'm I'm supposed to be trying to do.
And so we have our closed session. I'm not sure that.
Yes.
A whole lot of productivity.
No.
Great.
You know, you die through this, you understand that, dude.
Okay.
Just just to recap, if that's okay, I mean, what we're looking at tonight is it's a group outs, but that's where we, last year to this year, we're not. I don't have any spending. Bringing under budget departments in line, whether that's overtime, surances, um. Utility costs, those are bringing out to actual dollars. And looking at the actual operating expenses day to day, but that increases smaller than what you make.
Right.
It's it's we're we're trying to get to a place where we're setting ourselves up. It's a slower transition from last year to.
This is next year, yeah.
If it's able to get to that. Do that, can be paid. Have to have to pay for it then. Yes, we want to lessen the tax impact, but if we don't pay for it now. Pay for it in the future and do we spread that out or do we do that for larger amounts like that? So I think. Historically, if you look at tax levies from past, it's the more or less stagnant for a number of years. And now we're paying for the streets.
Yeah, I feel like we're back to the two big things. It's salary and the streets. And then for too many years, the streets got.
Thank you for giving the solid numbers for those departments that I mean, the budgets aren't that accurate, so.
Yeah, so good, yeah.
Keep tweaking.
Yes.
I I told Leslie this, but I was at a release or a retreat and we had a futurist. And I found myself thinking about. Responsibility as a council member and thinking about my future and thinking it. So maybe that's a challenge to go back to too, with or being proven that we don't really do. We don't want to overspend. I I mean, the amount we came up with, I think is too high for us to live with this year. Because it's not solving next year or other years and things. But I would challenge us also to make sure that we're not cutting something out of our budget that could help us be a better. In the long term, you know. We have to recognize that we have to do something. Can't do something this year, but to do it next year or whatever. But I think that to me was was sitting there thinking, you can't just look at the numbers. You have to think of the importance of. Of the need to be a better, be a better one.
Because we still have to attract people here. Still need the parking rack. We still need. Good roads.
How it lives for the parents and citizens too, right?
Yeah.
Make the function. Would you second?